Could you come forward, please, sir? Tonight, I've asked Pastor Horace Willis, who is the incoming pastor at Tabernacle Baptist Church, on North Jackson?
South Jackson.
South Jackson, sorry. Directionally challenged. Horace, have you started full-time yet?
Well, that will be starting in August.
Okay, so certainly a welcome addition to our community. And Pastor Daniel Ramey, who is a good friend of mine who passed away a few months ago, actually ordained Mr. Willis. So if you could please say the prayer for us tonight, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Howard. Let us go to God in prayer. Father God, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. Father God, we thank you for your son. Jesus Christ died on the cross for us, Father God. And we just pray on tonight, Father God, that we will give you honor and praise throughout this council meeting right now. Father God, we pray, Lord, that you will use us, Father God, as representatives, Father God, to represent this city, Monroe, Georgia, Father God, the best way we know how. And, Lord, we just pray, Lord, that we would just give you all the honor and all the praise. And we pray, Lord, that your will will be done on tonight. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I appreciate your coming in. I had the opportunity to visit Tabernacle a couple of years ago for a men's breakfast that was served by the ladies of the church. And then the ladies breakfast the following month, served by the men of the church. Just a great, great group of folks over there. I'll call this meeting to order. June 13th, 2023. It is now six o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Let the record reflect that all members of council are present, save Mr. Boyce. He may come in any moment. I've not heard from him. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda with two additions. We have a real estate issue and a legal issue that we need to discuss. And Mr. Rosenthal wants to discuss something on new business under item D.
Yes, that's right, Mayor. I'd ask it on new business, number two, D, vines of Monroe subdivision appeal. We're working with legal counsel, vines of Monroe subdivision. Ask if we take that off this month. And it may come back up next month. We may just get this resolved with everybody. Everybody's talking right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. So approval of the agenda with those amendments, please.
May I approve?
I'll tell you the motion for Mr. Little and the second for Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda, which would be the council and executive session minutes from May. The April meetings of planning commission, historic preservation, downtown development. Downtown development the following week in the CVB minutes as well. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Crawford to approve. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Garrett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Do we have Mr. Eli Yater and Ms. Chloe Juhan available tonight? Eli and Chloe? Chloe, come on up. Come on up, Eli. These two are our high school graduates. Chloe has been an intern with us for the past several months, when she was not doing rounds at the hospital or studying on her many college courses already. She'll be heading to West Georgia in the fall. She's an outstanding tennis player, Beta Club, and just a sweet disposition and wonderful person to have around our team. Eli is graduate from Ms. Dickinson School. Ms. Dickinson, are you here? Monroe Country Day School. She is more proud of you, I think, than your mother. But I think your mom and dad were coming tonight. At least I invited them. Eli is a strong addition to our technology department downstairs. So I'm glad that both of you are sharing your skills with us and have a little something for each of you. Thank you, folks. Moving to students from the University of Liverpool. University of Georgia Global Studies has reached out the last couple of years and come and spent time with folks, with the students. They go to Atlanta, the big city. They're in Athens, the big college town. And then they've come to the best small town in America the last couple of years. And I had Kirkland take them to the top of the courthouse. I think Patrice went up with them. They also got to experience Southern brewing, so that was a lot of fun. Niles and Eleanor, could one of you come up and talk a little bit about the program? Sorry to put you on the spot. You can stand behind the podium. We'll get you recorded. And we want you to do a little song, too. So ready, go.
Yeah, so hello, everyone. We're from Liverpool, so I could do a song if we so wish.
You know people.
We're a group from the University of Liverpool, so I am the manager there. So I look after all of our outgoing exchange programs. And we're very lucky to be able to fund 20 of our students from our alumni donations to the university to come and spend a week at UGA. So each year, the program changes slightly, but we look at kind of zeitgeist topics. And we're very much led by UGA and kind of what they're focusing on at this moment. So this year's focus is around civil engagement, civic engagement, and kind of race diversity and equality in the U.S. as well, looking at our similarities. Liverpool is a very similar city to Liverpool in terms of its history. And kind of looking at where we have got some common ground and where we differ. So we take part in academic sessions in the morning, and then we do lots of social things in the afternoon as well. So we've been here in Monroe today, which has been brilliant this afternoon. We've done a scavenger hunt around the town, which was put together for us by Brandy from the Fallon Institute. And then also, we've been to Southern Brewery. We were up the tower as well today. I didn't go up because I'm not very good in tight spaces, so maybe that won't miss. But yeah, so thank you all very much for having us. I really appreciate it. And it's been a wonderful afternoon here in Monroe.
Well, we are so glad you're here and thank you for including us on your trip. I will say the names, so ladies and gentlemen, if you would. I apologized already that I'm going to mispronounce. But Joel Apathai from Kent, Eloise Bateman from Mercy Side, Emma Jean Birch Dixon from Wakefield, David Campbell from Mercy Side, Charlotte Crossley Smith from Rockdale, Natalie Dut from Mercy Side, Taylor Gray Wood from Bradford on Avon. Did I say that right? Yes. Amy Hadwin from Mercy Side, Chloe Hammerlich from West Midlands, Lily Hughes from Oswestry, Zoha Mteaz from Warwickshire. How about that? All right, thank you. Simran Kaur Bajwa from West Bromwich, Nicola Kocanovic from Mercy Side, Daisy Pagonas from Manchester, Amy Schofield? Schofield or Schofield? Schofield from Mercy Side, Emily Shaw from Lincolnshire, Seamus Smith from Mercy Side, Olivia Spence from Lychestershire. How'd it do? Your silence is deafening. Thank you. Rachel Stacy from Harrogate, Rebecca Williamson from Crewe, Niall O'Donnell from Mercy Side, and Eleanor Allen from Mercy Side. And it's Niall, correct? All right. Niall, thank you for bringing these outstanding young people. We're so glad you're here. I know you don't want to sit through a whole lot more, so if you want to pack up and go, great. If you want to see Desa do a little song and dance, you can stick around for a minute. But I thank you so much for being here. What we'll do, we'll do the Walton Works presentation, Waste and Recycling Workers Week proclamation. We're going to give them a couple of minutes to ease on out, and then we'll get going. Thank you again, folks. I appreciate your coming. Enjoyed meeting you. For those of you standing in the back, you have some seats that have just become available, so feel free to move on in. Ladies and gentlemen, you all already know Desa Morris, but she's probably the most vital connection between schools, businesses, and the work community for Walton County. And I've asked her to come in tonight, say a few words about what's happening at Walton Works. And Desa, you have the floor.
Fantastic. I was hoping this was going to be an international presentation, but our new friends just exited. So we may still bill it that way for the Development Authority meeting next month. I appreciate the opportunity to come give you a very brief presentation. I know your agenda is packed, but I want everyone to believe me that the time is now. We are actually past time. Everyone should be motivated because we have 8,630 new advanced manufacturing jobs coming to our community in the next two and a half years. So in 30 months, it's a little scarier when you say it in months, isn't it? We will have even more opportunities here. We need to make sure our people are ready. Our young people are eager to get ready. People that are my age and somewhere in between sometimes are not quite as eager to learn new skills. But these jobs are programming the robots. They're coding. They're not just your, when you think of industrial jobs, they're repetitive. I guess it ain't your grandma's factory anymore. These are great jobs that provide a great living. So I just want to give you a quick snapshot about what's going on. We have 35 industries here, and I'm just a very brief presentation of what's happening. Back in April, hosted a big job fair, brought the regional job fair here, had 42 companies, Monroe area high schools, all behind it. It was fantastic. Unfortunately, we only had 120 people attend. So I said, if there were less than 100 that came, I was going to cry. And if there were more than 200 that came, I was going to dance. So my Newton County coworker, who does the same thing that I do in Walton, he said, well, actually, Desa, it's the best of all worlds. You didn't cry, and we didn't have to watch you dance. But with such low unemployment in our community, it is a little challenging to find people to fill our jobs. So I spend a lot of time working with the Georgia Department of Education. I'm actually going to be with them for the rest of the week, going around doing presentations about what we do here. The City of Social Circle, not the City of Social Circle, but Social Circle City Schools has just received this Economic Development Partnership. As you'll know, a lot of our growth is happening at the south end of the county, so that's very important. But I think the reason I got invited tonight was to tell you about some recent grants that I have been involved with, because we all love other people's money. So for the Monroe area high school, which has a manufacturing pathway, we were recently awarded through the Georgia Department of Education an SME Prime Grant. So the Monroe area high school, the Walton County School District, we're all busy this summer getting additional training for our manufacturing pathway instructor, Charles Jones, getting new equipment. And we're trying to make manufacturing more appealing to our young people. It is a great living, pays well, but it is hard work. Worked with our school systems to get a grant through the Walton Foundation. I told you, we need kids that can code, kids that can program robots. We need them to start an elementary school. While we're doing some of that, we wanted to boost that, and the Walton Foundation was very generous. We will start VEX robotics programs in two high schools, one middle school and one elementary school. Monroe area high school is going to be building an electric car to compete in Elektrathon. You'll notice that Loganville is already competing in that, so we want to get in that game. We bought a set of programmable drones that we're going to use with middle schoolers to actually let them play and find out it's not really hard. It's fun, and it might be something that they like to do. And a crowning achievement in my five years in this job is we're actually bringing welding to Walton County, to Monroe specifically, through a partnership with Athens Tech and the Walton County School District. Our students, especially at Monroe area high school and other students that want to be bused, will be welding for dual enrollment credits starting in August. And the Walton Foundation generously gave us some of those materials that we need to keep them safe. Getting into even bigger money, worked with the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission. As you guys have heard before, we do our externships, where we take educators and we put them in industry for a year. For a year, for a week. You may remember, when I took industry people into schools for a few days, it didn't go so well. So we decided it's just best to train our teachers. But got funding for that. And then we're going to, we're working on a grant to get an RV, a STEM RV, that will go around to middle schoolers, to middle schoolers, elementary schoolers, and also help us engage adults that might like to try some STEM opportunities. Partnered with the Student Success Alliance to do our graduating senior interviews. We had 16 companies participate, 102 students, lots of interviews. But guys, there are a lot more than 102 students in our four high schools that are going straight to work. We have to do better here. We can't afford for any students to get lost. We need them contributing to our society. Back to the externship program, because these folks help us get students interested in our careers. We just hosted that a couple of weeks ago. We had 14 externs. You'll see that we go all the way down to elementary school. I would like to thank Takeda Holder, Leggett and Platt, and Walton EMC. We've built up a team of 81 alumni that have gone through this program in the past five years that are still employed here, and that pays dividends. When I bring people to our schools, like the University of Georgia College of Engineering, and they're looking for places to put artificial intelligence modules in their schools, and I have a whole team of people that can talk to them, and we're all pulling in the same direction. Obviously, I could not come here without telling you that I also do events. I was at the Community Impact Day and Housing Expo. People won't just normally talk to me, so I usually bring Legos to talk to them about jobs and kind of bribe them. But it was a wonderful day. I've had several calls and have helped several people find jobs, because usually you need a great local career to be able to buy a house. And then I wanted to mention a new initiative that started in April, is working with the Department of Corrections. I would love to expand this program to just be open generally, and hopefully we'll be able to hire someone to help me make that happen. But our next session is tomorrow. If you have someone who is a returning citizen or that might need a little help, that has to have a job, this is an initiative through the Department of Corrections will help you get your resume. I've been able to place everyone except one young man that I'm still working on. But depending on your background, I can usually help you get a job. But all I want you to remember is www.walton-work/jobs. I checked today, I've got 104, five local industrial careers there. All I do is link to other people's websites, but if you're looking for a job, please visit there. If you're interested in workforce, reach out. If you have someone on a couch in your basement that needs a job, reach out. Anything to do with workforce, please reach out. Would certainly love to work together, and I appreciate the support of the Monroe City Council in being cheerleaders for this program. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Desa. Are there any questions for Ms. Morris? She has a son who just graduated from law school. Ole Miss?
Ole Miss.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Desa. Moving to Waste and Recycling Workers Week proclamation. First of all, Danny, I don't think we can ever thank your team enough. The work that goes in, and this is for all of our directors, especially those who are out doing the day-to-day, keeping Monroe safe, keeping Monroe clean, keeping Monroe in good infrastructural working order. Our thanks and gratitude can't be expressed enough. So I appreciate each and every one on that team. This proclamation, Waste and Recycling Workers Week, June 17th through June 23rd, 2023. Sorry, off a couple decades. Whereas the nation celebrates the week of June 23rd as National Professional Waste and Recycling Workers Week, and whereas the earliest garbage regulation efforts began in 3,000 B.C., when the first landfill was developed in Crete, where large holes were dug for refuse, and whereas since that time, sanitation workers have worked selflessly and tirelessly in all types of environments, and at risk to themselves to provide sanitation services to protect communities and residents, prevent disease, and keep our communities clean, safe, and beautiful. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the eradication of many diseases in the Western world is due in large part to higher public sanitation standards, resulting from effective garbage disposal. And whereas Georgia's men and women employed in the waste and recycling industries makes significant contributions to the safety, health, and welfare of our residents by processing millions of tons of garbage and recycling annually. And whereas every year, the Georgia Chapter of Solid Waste Association of North America celebrates Waste and Recycling Workers Week to honor those we depend on for the collection of and proper disposal of waste, recyclables, and leaf and limbs to promote clean and tidy communities. Now therefore, I, John S. Howard, Mayor of the City of Monroe, do recognize the week of June 17th through June 23rd, 2023, as Waste and Recycling Workers Week. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Monroe to be affixed this 13th day of June, the year of our Lord, 2023. John S. Howard, Mayor, City of Monroe, Georgia. Danny?
I don't read quite as fast as well as Paul does, but I try. Thank you so much. We do have some of the bad guys here. Who we got? Stan, some did make it.
I see y'all tomorrow night. Y'all be tomorrow night? Right, dinner? Chris Bailey? Doctor Chris?
I don't think I'm buying y'all dinner tomorrow night. But I mean, I will, since it's been committed.
Yeah, I'm having dinner with somebody tomorrow night. I thought that was them. Okay. Moving forward to public comments, please. I have Natasha Jones from 121 Victory Drive. Yes, ma'am? Come forward. I think, are you here for the discussion that's already on the agenda? Okay. Give me just a little bit. We won't worry about public comment. Lisa Parks Ellis from North Street. You come forward, please.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm fine. The topic I wanted to discuss today is homelessness, which Monroe is beginning to see a lot of. There are many reasons to why a person is homeless. Have we turned a blind eye to those in distress? If so, our convictions that we call ourselves, such as Christians or whatever we call ourselves, is only a title without merit. Those of us who are leaders are stealing from God, because we take from those who has less and give to those who have more. Homelessness causes problems, mental, physical, and to our city itself. In a twinkling of an eye, everyone in this room's situation can change. One minute, we are on top of the world, the next minute, we are bound. In 2018, I was homeless. No one ever thought. Let the city of Monroe put up a plan or proposal to help those that are homeless. I'm asking each and every one of you here on city council. Let's help do something for those that are homeless in Monroe. We have homeless behind Walgreens. We have homeless down on Felker Street, down in the trenches, late at night in darkness, putting up tents, sleeping. And then, as quick as sunlight comes, they're gone. They're in, behind hardest sleep. Again, when daylight comes, they are gone. They're on benches near John Supermarkets asleep. I have rolled around, I have seen. We need to get together and band together and do something, anything. If you want to put up a homeless shelter, I'd be the first one to help run it. But we got to stop turning a deaf ear, not seeing what has become a problem in our city. Monroe is beautiful, it's growing, but we got to do more than what we're doing. Now, this topic has come up before the city council on many, many occasions, and I haven't seen anyone or heard anyone doing anything. I thank you for your time, and I hope tonight, something that I said to each and every one of you will grow in your mind and want to do something to help. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Antonio Ramal? Did I pronounce that? Tony, I'm sorry. I even jotted you down here at the bottom, and I went, you know what? Just in case he didn't sign in. Yeah, we're going to work on that penmanship.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deacon Tony Ramey of Tabernacle Baptist Church here in Monroe. I'm the chairman down at the church, and I think I have a simple request tonight. We'd like to ask the City of Monroe, on behalf of Tabernacle Baptist Church and the entire Ramey family, to consider renaming South Jackson Street to Daniel Ramey Lane. Our pastor passed away on November 30th of 2022. He was a pastor at Tabernacle for 20 years. During that time, many lives were saved. He was a proponent for this community. We had new construction in the city. We built a new church in 2013. I would love to see his legacy continue with the street named in his honor. It's a simple name. It's clear. It's unambiguous. It's logical what we're asking to name the street. And I just ask you tonight, would you please consider renaming that street in his honor? He was a great man. He did everything he could for his city, for his congregants, for this community. And I think that would be a simple honor to say, thank you for your service. He was a true service and a giant in this community. He was a citizen of Monroe. He was born and raised here, went to school here, did everything here in Monroe, Georgia. This is his home. This is his city. And I just request you tonight, would you please consider renaming that street in his honor? We're the only address on that street. The library is on West Green. The funeral home is on Washington. First Baptist is on McDaniel. There's another house beside the church that's on McDaniel. It wouldn't obstruct anybody, any businesses, any residences in the area. It could be a simple change. And I just ask you tonight, would you please consider that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you so much. Would love to say that's a slam dunk. We do have that up for discussion tonight. We might have to jump through some hoops and do things. We will always have to do things legally correctly. I think you're going to like what you hear. He was a very good friend of mine, and I appreciate your coming and talking. Yes, sir. Ms. Reed? Welcome, Ms. Reed. How are you? Good, thank you.
Evening, everyone. When I was here last month, I just let you guys knew that I would be talking to the mayor in Madison. And I met with him, and I wanted to come back and let y'all know what I found out, because I just want to help some kind of way. And I know I can meet with our mayor, and I will be.
Yes, ma'am.
And, but the things that I found out, I mean, they gave me a lot. I mean, a lot of information. There was the builder, the mayor, and I think she was part of the development of what would be going on in Madison. And then I hear of a program, some entity called Git, G-I-T.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Then I found out some of the people that were on the committee. But I think that committee, or whatever it is, just go find out, prove that this is needed. And that was interesting to find out. But I just know that some way, somehow, we got to help these people. I don't know how to do it by myself. I've been asked to speak, but if any of y'all have any kind of information, my number on that sheet, call me. Just tell me what I can do. And I, we got to get started some kind of way, because I'm telling y'all, too many people can't find nowhere to live. And it's sad. And I think I heard Mr. Dickinson say last month, I think you referenced that, something about small houses or something to that reference. And you also said that it's nothing the government can do. Did you say that?
Well, what I said was, we need to target what we do so that we're successful at it. We can't take on every aspect of it. But yes, ma'am, I am very much a proponent of doing some developments that have small houses. Rita and I just moved into an 800-square-foot cottage back on Davis. We love it. It's not for everybody. I mean, if you've got a huge family, that's going to work. But small families, single people, older folks, you know, I think it would work. But small families, single people, uh, older folks, you know, I think it would work, and it's, I think it's one of the things we'll be talking about.
Okay.
As we move forward.
All right. And also, I wanted to say, um, and then we'll sit down, um, also, I wanted to mention that, as a realtor, we have people that qualify to buy houses, and a number of people, they can really buy houses, I mean, but the house started four hundred thousand dollars and worked for us, that ain't happening for a lot of people. Um, so just something to think about, and I appreciate y'all's time. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, appreciate your coming in. Mr. Head, Charles Head? Well, I'm, I appreciate your, your hobbling on up, how are you?
No, I was just here, I had talked to, uh, the, the mayor, uh, a couple of months ago.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I was born and raised here in Monroe, and, um, what I was thinking about, you know, Monroe's growing so, and, and Monroe's beautiful. And, uh, I talked to John about it, and, uh, about the railroad that comes from Social Circle to Monroe.
Yes, sir.
And, um, he was talking about putting a walking trail down through there, but I had suggested to him, why not have a trolley to come from Monroe to Social Circle, and it would be ideal for Monroe to be... I don't know what would happen, but I think a lot of people would want to ride it, and it's just a suggestion that, uh, it would be good. I know when I was a little boy, the one used to come up from, uh, from Wanda, on the Gaines bury Midland, and, uh, and I've seen it once or twice, I don't know, and I swear to you, I thought maybe if Monroe could get something like that, uh, I know Mr. Stevens, he passed away, owned the railroad track.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know who owns it now, but I just figured, some of y'all might be interested, and it would be a good idea for Monroe.
We did, uh, we did work with him on that, try to get that Rails to Trails, uh, and we'll be making another, another run at that, but that would be, that would be a private decision on the actual operating of the, of a trolley. Um, so that would, that would be out of our hands, but the Rails to Trails is something we'll definitely be striving for as we move in the future. But I'll actually take your idea to him, if I can find out the, the, the inherit, inheritance, how that all worked out, I'm not really sure.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Head, I appreciate you coming in. City Administrator update, Mr. Probst.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I guess the housing discussion was a good segue into highlighting the May twenty-seventh Community Impact and Housing Day. Um, it was a, a partnership with the city and several other agencies that put, put on this event, uh, on Saturday, the twenty-seventh. There were over two hundred participants, twenty educational and wellness vendors, five empowering sessions, and thirty participants completed homeownership applications through Habitat for Humanity, so that, that was a, a big deal. So, a big thanks to a lot of our departments, Central Services, Public Works, Fire Department, uh, Main Street, Community Development, the mayor, and, uh, Mr. Garrett, Councilman, uh, for all attending and, and making sure that was a successful event for the community. Um, really, it was just more about just educating what we can do together collectively, as, has been the discussion over the past couple of months, to try to move this, this conversation forward. So, um, this probably won't be the last event by any means, so we'll keep that up and just, you know, understanding the housing front, that train moves pretty slowly. There's a lot of, um, regulation that has to be changed, zoning, things like that, that make, uh, housing and especially affordable housing, um, palatable and really economically viable. So, uh, it's not a Monroe-centric issue, it is something that is going on nationwide, if not worldwide, uh, as we speak, so we're, we're all kind of suffering through this together to try to figure out the best way forward on the housing issue. Millage rate, normally, we get the tax digest, uh, about now. Um, spoke with the tax assessor, it'll come out to Monroe in a couple of weeks. From there, we'll be able to figure out where our tax digest millage rate, uh, is, we usually set that in mid-August, early August, so we have to see that, see where it is. I anticipate we'll probably discuss some sort of rollback based on, um, how the digest settles, because I think everybody's received their assessments and they've gone up greatly, um, for the most part, but again, that, there's a lot of appeals that have to go through the county tax assessor's office before they can submit the final digest, so what we got as a preliminary may change dramatically if they approve a lot of those appeals, so, uh, look for that to come out to you all in the next, uh, month, as, as staff's recommendation on that. And lastly, we've been, uh, working really hard for the past few years with, uh, Georgia Department of Transportation on a variety of issues. There's probably about twenty, twenty-two things overall, very small to very large, such as the bypass, that we've been trying to put on the ground in Monroe, and I think I, I calculated it up, that we have somewhere in the vicinity of a hundred million dollars worth of projects to be, um, programmed in Monroe over the next probably ten years, so that's a big deal.
That's a huge deal.
For the City of Monroe, to try to keep traffic moving, and we can get rid, rid of some of these log jams that we have. Um, that is all I've got right now.
Thank you, Logan. Any questions for Mr. Probst?
I have a quick question. I got a chance to talk to Mr. Knight the other day, and he was saying that the city could also do something different, because I was talking to him about, um, my taxes, because I don't think my property's worth what they got it assessed as. And I'm thinking that the city can implement some, something similar to what the county have been doing as far as trying to help people with them, um...
So, homestead exemption?
Um, that is one thing they're doing, but it's, it's something, um, a little bit different, where he was saying that we could somewhere try to hold the rate, but it had to be done through the city, where you could either lower the millage rate back down, or you can make it some, something that could be flat, that all that, um, what everybody just been seeing the last month, because it, I mean, we all know that the house itself, for what they're selling for, there's no way, excuse me, these little fourteen hundred square feet house are worth, are worth no four hundred thousand dollars. You're not gonna make me believe that, no kind of way. These houses should be built at one hundred, little bit a hundred plus, and maybe sell for a little more, but that four hundred thousand dollar, what they say in these houses worth in Monroe, there ain't no way these houses cost that much to build.
Two parts to that. So, yes, there is a, another mechanism we could do. Um, it's, it basically freezes the assessment if you're the homeowner. The county does, does do that for your primary home if you're the homeowner. Um, the, the good news of that is you'll, you'll pay on that same assessed value year after year. The bad news on that is, for a city like Monroe, or Social Circle, or Loganville, that has a whole lot of commercial or industrial di- digest value, it doesn't apply to them, so their millage rate and taxes will have to go up dramatically each year to compensate for the frees and homeowners. Now, that's a policy decision of this council or any board, um, but the county doesn't have a tremendous amount of commercial or industrial property, so it really doesn't affect them like it would in Monroe. So, we can study that, because it's a tremendous balancing act that we would have to do. So, I think it's certainly worth studying, I think Mr. Bradley actually brought up something similar the other day. Um, as far as the assessment, City Monroe does not control assessments whatsoever, that's a hundred percent done at the county level and actually checked up on by the state, Department of Revenue, and so I agree, assessments are really high, but when we do rollbacks, the rollback is actually taking the value of that, what's called inflationary value, where your value has grown according to the real estate appraisers by, let's say, fifty thousand dollars from last year to this year, we're rolling that value back off of your taxes to try to equalize it as close to possible as the previous year. And that has to be done equally across the entire tax digest, can't be for individual properties, but more or less, it comes within, you know, a few dollars, once you do the rollback.
Are there any other questions for Logan? Here and now, we'll move to you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, sir. So, our terminal building at the airport, uh, is complete, we got the final CO this past week. Uh, that was built with a little bit over eight hundred thousand dollars in grant funds, so currently, we're waiting on the, uh, final inspection with, uh, DOT, GMC to sign off on that, lettering to go on the building, then we'll start working on the furnishings. Uh, last month, I did mention, too, that we had an airport survey by the Department of Transportation. Their LiDAR study in late two thousand twenty-two identified eighty-nine obstructions, uh, on the airport for Runways Three to One, um, and that involves eighteen different parcels. The good part of that is, we own roughly one-third of those obstructions and parcels, so we can do that removal in-house later this year, and then we're gonna work with the FAA and DOT to get grant funding to remove the rest of it, but that's gonna, a lot of you are here on council, and we went through that years ago, so we're fixing to get ready to go through that again, and I look for it to be about a two to a three-year process. Um, and then as, as we have updates along the way, I, I look for it to be in the CIP for this coming year. Mr. Pierce Giles came and spoke several months ago, Ms. Crawford, we had talked about it, about the guard rail on East Marable, we currently have out, uh, waiting on pricing from three contractors, uh, to get us bids back. We've got design and everything from Keckinwood, so hopefully, that project gets done sometime in July, if not early August, and we will have a guard rail on that turn that goes off into that ravine, so.
Thank you.
That'll be done, and I'll actually, uh, shoot him a message on Facebook to let him know. Uh, we've also, uh, through Streets Department, noise parking signs that the DDA Board requested, uh, over the last couple of months are out, you'll see those coming into town, uh, to try to help out a little bit around different parking areas, downtown, some of that. Um, and then two, so far this year, we have rehabbed a little over nine hundred feet of sidewalks in the town. Currently, you'll see out, we have bids for our West Spring Street natural gas replacement, that's a little over seven thousand feet of natural gas to be replaced, it's two and four inch pipe. Uh, Walton Road sidewalks is a little over thirty-seven hundred feet, and we're gonna see what the pricing comes back in on that, um, take a look at funding, what we can do, and try to get in there and replace and fix and repair all those sidewalks before we get into paving Walton Road. Um, and then quick, we had a roughly eight thousand people at the Flower Festival on May twentieth, and then as the mayor had read the proclamation, uh, Waste and Recycling Workers Week, uh, June seventeenth through the twenty-third, I think what he was maybe referring to was, we have a lunch planned on the twenty-second, uh, that'll, that will get everybody together, uh, with Solid Waste, Streets, Public Works, Dormant Water, and to fix his, uh, comment, Caffrey, Alvin, Roger, the mayor will buy you guys lunch, um, one day, uh, either the end of this week or next week, um, and I'll hold him to that, if he doesn't, I will.
I'll do that.
And y'all get that for coming to the meeting, and thank y'all. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Chris? I was just texting you going, what are we supposed to be doing? So apparently, we're having dinner twice over the next couple of months, guys, just let me know. Okay, um, so there were no questions for Chris. Mr. Thompson, Utility, uh, indefeasible right of use agreement?
Yes, sir. This agreement is very similar to the agreement we did with, uh, Georgia Public Web back in the early two thousands, and I'll try to explain it in the, best way I can. Um, an indefeasible right of usage is a right of usage of existing fibers that we own, that we'll be trading, in this case, to Georgia Network Operations Company and, uh, GTC, which is Georgia Transmission Corporation. These are two arms of the EMCs of Oglethorpe. They handle the transmission lines, the substations, and the communications between those substations for the EMCs. That being said, we, we're in a good position. We have fiber going from Snellville to Watkinsville, and from Monroe to, uh, Social Circle. It's a big operation, or a big plant being built, uh, just south of, right off Social Circle called the Rivian Plant, and, uh, GTC has a very vested interest in communicating with that substation, it's gonna be a very large substation. We have a vested interest in getting internet, uh, basic internet, uh, traffic back to Monroe, and right now, we only have one company that provides that. Now, there are three different paths for that, there are two paths to Atlanta, and one path that runs the same path as one of our Atlanta paths, but splits off and goes to Jacksonville, so that gives us some redundancy in our, our system. Problem with that is, we only have one company. If that one company has a global issue, we have a global issue. Now, that's never happened, and we don't want it to happen, but we have, when this line was built from GTC, from Atlanta to Walton EMC, we started negotiating with them about access to that line, and we came up what I think is a good plan for GTC and for Monroe. This will, this line will be built from the Substation One, Social Circle One, from that station over to some solar fields that are built over west of, uh, Social Circle, and then down to the Rivian Plant, and that'll consume about six and a half, seven miles of construction. We will also build short runs to substations all along one, um, eighty-one and our line that goes into Snellville and along seventy-eight. All this construction, um, will be paid for by GTC, so the, the, what we're asking for is for you to allow us to pull two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from CIP, construct this agreed line between us and Georgia Transmission Corporation, and turn over those fibers, those two fibers from here to Snellville, and those two, four fibers from here to Social Circle, and then the new construction from Social Circle down to Rivian, it's gonna be split fifty-fifty, we're gonna own half of them, and GTC's gonna own the other half. Whatever fits in the budget is what we're gonna build there. If I can make it work at two eighty-eight, we're gonna build two eighty-eight, and we'll have a hundred and forty-four fibers going into that area. If we can make it work at a little bit less, we'll make it work at a little bit less. But what this is gonna give us is ten gigs of internet data that is scalable, it can scale to any level. So right now, we're running on twenty gigs of data for the whole city, they're gonna give us ten, that'll give us thirty, and if something happens to our, our other line, we can scale that up to twenty on GTC and cover the whole city. Gives us a true redundant path back to the internet. I know it's a lot to say in a very short time, and it's, and it's a very big document, it's taken us almost a year to negotiate this. This was reviewed by, uh, Peter Floyd from Austin and Byrd, uh, he works a lot with the GTC and MEAG, and with E T, ECG, um, but it's a great deal for both of us. They can't build the thirty-some-odd miles of fiber they would have to build between here, Loganville, and Social Circle, and we can't get to the internet any other way economically. Uh, so it works out great for them, they're gonna be able to see all their substations in a real live mode, and we're gonna get free internet access for the life of this contract, which is twenty years. And I'll try to take any questions you may have.
So what gonna happen after the twenty years?
Well, Norman, I hope I'm not here anymore after twenty years, and we'll figure that out, but there will be agreements made, so we're in the, we're in the sixteenth or seventeenth year of our twenty-year IRU with GPW, or Accelacom now, and they're already wanting to renew that. You can't see, you can't see business plans past those twenty years. Internet access costs for us on a wholesale thing have been dropping like a rock, but you, we've been needing more and more and more and more, so over that, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing more than twenty years, uh, with this, because I think the business plan would be different. I think we can get more out of them after that point. And we're gonna have to maintain this, we have to maintain our fiber anyway, we're maintaining fiber between here and Social Circle, and here and Snellville today. There will be some other agreements coming forward later with EMC, we have an existing pole attachment agreement with EMC, we can build this without any other agreements with Walton, but I see some advantages for us in Walton, and maybe we'll get a little more out of this as we move forward. But this is a standalone agreement, it works inside our pole attachment agreement with Walton, but I will be coming back to you with another agreement from them later on.
Line we're gonna build, Brian, you said, um, they're gonna pay for.
Yes, sir.
And yet, we're gonna maintain half of the fiber.
We'll maintain all the fibers.
I mean, we're gonna maintain it, but we'll own half of it.
We will own half of it.
For our use.
Yes, sir.
Which, even a small count would be thirty-six.
Oh, it's, it'll, it'll be at least ninety-six.
At least ninety-six.
For, for our usage.
And then the only others giving up the six fibers.
Six total fibers, two from between here and, and Snellville, and two between here and... Six total fibers, two from between here and Snellville and two between here and... Four between here and Social Circle.
And those are coming off of 96.
They're setting up there right now, making us nothing.
You good?
What if we kind of overbuilt that?
We're going to build it to the... I think we can build it to the 288 that me and you talked about. I think that fits the budget, but I just... I want to be, you know, very honest. If we hit some snags here, I'm going to have to lower that fiber count.
Larry? Any question? We'll be reimbursed.
Yeah.
It's a reimbursement program, so it's just a pass-through.
It's just a pass-through. We're getting a check directly from either GTC or whatever this other... Georgia Network Operations Company. They're sort of like MEAG, but they broke it up a little bit different. Oglethorpe broke up into several different arms. And these guys are the ones that are running the internet. These guys are the ones that are deploying the direct internet access for all the EMC fiber projects. So, that's how it became possible. When they started buying that internet access for those projects, it became possible for us to do this. We have a great working relationship with the staff there. They're members of FNA, and that's how we made this happen. We sat down at a table one day and started these conversations about a year ago.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Little and a second by Mr. Garrett to approve.
Is this been approved by our attorneys?
By our local attorneys. We use Peter Floyd.
Okay.
Who handles most of these fiber and electric contracts.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to Utilities, easement acquisition services for raw water main replacement, Mr. Probst.
All right, more fun stuff here. As you know, we've been on a roll with 2020 bond, utility bond projects. And this one here is kind of a necessity, unfortunately. We have to acquire some additional easement in order to put two different pipes in the ground for the raw and finished water that'll run from the Alcovee River up to the water plant. This is a pretty large, long piece of property, rather, that cuts through some of the Rowell property out there on the west side of Charlotte Rowell Boulevard. And our requested expense, which is based on appraised fair market value, is $160,000. It fits in well within the project budget for right-of-way acquisition for this project. Some of this stuff has been donated over the years here and there, but this one, we're going to have to go ahead and purchase. If we were to move it further down the road through any sort of condemnation process, et cetera, we'd spend even more money, more than likely. So, the property owner is okay with this price, $160,000.
Sounds great. Are there any questions for Logan? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Little. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to new business, public hearing for 414 Davis Street rezone. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The request before City Council this evening is a request from B2 and PRD to the R1A zoning district. The applicant is requesting to develop two single-family residences on two infill lots. And on the screen behind you, there represented on there is the two infill lots. They'll be accessed off Bell Alley, they'll front on Davis Street. The Planted Commission has reviewed the request, recommended approval as submitted without conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for purpose of public input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the rezone? Is the applicant here? Well, come on up.
If there's any questions, you know, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. So, you're speaking in favor of it. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak? You can have a seat, we'll be quick.
Okay.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak against the rezone? Hearing none, I'll... Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, 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 come forward, please, if you don't mind introducing yourself. In your name?
I'm sorry, my name's Crystal.
Crystal.
Tollison. This is a rezone from what to what?
Mr. Calendar?
This is a rezone request from the B2 zoning district to the planned residential district. That's the existing underlying zoning of the subject property. He's asking to rezon the property to the R1A district in order to subdivide the property under our infill lot rule. R1A is medium lot density residential.
Okay, and then build homes?
Two single-family houses, yes, ma'am.
And then, does that have to go through the historical committee thing? Is that within the historic?
This property is not located inside a historic district.
Okay. In that outline, it looks like there's a house already there. Am I looking at the wrong thing?
So, all right, so, yeah, I can help out with that. So, there... You see the aerial photograph here from my point of view. There's an existing single-family structure that uses a church for a number of years on the subject property. The applicant proposes to raise that structure and construct two single-family homes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Tollison. Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? I'll open it one more time, in favor or against. Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we will come back to revisit in just a few minutes. Moving to conditional use, 121 Victory Drive, Mr. Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This conditional use request is for a telecommunications tower. Subject property at 121 Victory Drive is currently zoned M1. It is the location of the Georgia Sand and Stone Halling and Retail Center. The cell tower this requested is a conditional use that's allowed on that property. Does require City Council approval. And as you see on the screen behind you, I've highlighted the general location of the proposed tower. It's on the south end of the site, adjacent to the Great Walton Railroad and the southern boundary of the property. The requested tower is a 150-foot-tall telecommunications tower. It's a typical monopole-style construction that you see pretty much everywhere you see cell towers. They are proposing, as you can see in the elevation, a total of four carrier capacity locations. So, I think they intend to have one on there, but the tower will have the ability to have additional carriers on the tower, which is the intent of your ordinance itself to limit the number of towers in an area if you can accommodate more carriers. So, they've included a detail of the compound on the site that complies with your ordinance for the telecommunications site itself. It will be fenced and enclosed, and will have some modest landscaping around the edge of it. One particular note that is in your ordinance is that cell towers themselves that are on M1 or B3 properties as a conditional use must be at least the height of the tower away from a residential structure. So, I've illustrated on the screen behind you the distance from the base of the tower to the nearest residence, and it is a 150-foot distance. So, they comply with your minimum distance requirement for a tower structure to a residence. The Planted Commission recommendation is approval, subject to the three conditions that are outlined on the screen behind council. I'm happy to read those conditions if you would like, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, please.
So, the first condition, number one, the proposed telecommunications tower shall not be taller in height than described in the conditional use application and supporting documents. Second, the developer shall submit a structural tower analysis with the building permit application. The analysis shall be signed and sealed by a professional structural engineer licensed in the state of Georgia. The analysis shall include a structural analysis, drawings, calculations, and supporting documentation that includes the following. A, tower height and design, including technical engineering and other pertinent factors governing selection of the proposed design. A cross-section of the tower shall be... A cross-section of the tower structure shall be included. B, total anticipated capacity of the structure, including number and types of antenna, which can be accommodated on the tower. C, evidence of structural integrity of the tower structure. D, failure characteristics of the tower and demonstration that the site and setbacks are adequate size to contain debris. And third, the developer shall provide satisfactory evidence that FAA, FCC, and any appropriate state review authority requirements for the proposed tower met or that the tower is exempt from those regulations with the building permit application itself. These are pretty straightforward requirements for most tower companies that deal with these sort of things, so.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Any questions for Brad? I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for public comment. Is the applicant here? Your name, please, ma'am.
My name is Katie Harms. I'm with Atlas Tower.
Thank you, Ms. Harms.
Did anybody have any questions? I know we went through the zoning process. We were approved last month. Like Mr. Calendar said, this can fit four carriers. Right now, the main top carrier for the top tier would be AT&amp;T. For us to be... Obviously, we want four carriers. That makes it economically sound. It brings coverage to the area for any person using any type of carrier. And everything is within the ordinances. We've got a... It's a 30-by-50 footprint on the ground and 150 feet in the air.
Thank you, Ms. Harms. Does anyone have any questions? If you would, have a seat right there, just in case we need to come right back to you.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor? I'm coming back to you in just one second. Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone in addition to Ms. Jones who would like to speak? We'll let her go first. Against Ms. Jones, would you like to come forward?
I was wondering if you could go back to the map of the tower with the houses, and I want you to see one more.
Brad, do you mind?
And if you can see where Latasha Jones' name is in relation to the tower. I just want to start off from here.
And just to point out, Mr. Mayor, her property is located right there.
And actually, my parents live on this property. We bought this as a retirement home for them, so... A little nervous, sorry.
Take your time.
I wanted you guys to know that I am a U.S. Navy veteran. In the Navy, I was trained as an RF technician, satellite communications, and line-of-sight communications was my expertise. I worked on that stuff for six years. After I got out of the Navy, I then went to work for NASA in Las Cruces, New Mexico, on their satellite ground stations. So, RF is something I am very familiar with. And I never would park my parents next to a tower, ever. The whole time, when we are in the Navy, and we are being trained, we are being taught, you don't stand in front of an antenna, ever. You know, there would be like these long painted lines. Don't ever, if it's radiating, you don't go anywhere near that antenna. And the reason why the Navy cared that we were in front of a radiating antenna was because they were in charge of our medical expenses. They had to pay the bill, right? So, I know that there's FCC guidelines and all this other stuff about cellphone towers and all that other stuff, but a lot of that stuff is very outdated. So, every time that you go to another, like, say, 4G to 5G, you are changing the frequency a little bit. So, the frequency that, like, say, your microwave oven runs in, runs in that same kind of frequency brand. And your microwave, what does it do? It cooks water. And what are we made of? We are made of water. So, yeah, that's more power, more wattage, or whatever. But you're basically parking my parent... A tower next to my parents that has the ability to potentially cause damage. Now, this stuff hasn't been around long enough for there to be, like, really good studies. So, if you cruise out on the internet, you can find stuff for, like, pro and con of having, like, radiation in residential areas. But it hasn't been around long enough for us to really know if there's been health effects. So, I am asking that before you park a tower, probably 200 feet from where my mother lays her head every night, that we do a little bit more research on what the effects of radiating in a residential area. I mean, and if you look at that tower, I mean, it couldn't be closer to a house. I mean, they didn't park it in the middle. I mean, it's right up next to residential locations. And as you can see, I'm right across the street from that. So, I also wanted to say, like, way back then, you know, everybody thought smoking cigarettes wasn't going to harm you. And then, we found out, well, a lot of tobacco agencies were funding that kind of science. And then, there's all this speculation about the pharmacy industry funding science about vaccines. And we know that the telecommunications industry is also funding science about the exposure of radiation. So, I'm just asking for us to take a step back and not approve this application because, number one, we know it's AT&amp;T. We don't know the frequencies or the power that's going to be put out there. So, you're basically setting these residents up with a big unknown radiation hazard. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We appreciate your coming in. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against the project? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. There will be no action taken at this time. Moving to new business, the rezone at 414 Davis Street. I'll open the floor to council members only for discussion and/or action to rezon the property at 414 Davis.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the rezone request.
I'll take that. Yes, sir, okay. I have a motion by Mr. Dickinson to approve the rezone for the property at 414 Davis Street from B2 and PRD to R1A. David Dickinson made the motion. Is there a second? Is that you, Tyler? Second by Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to... The rezone, 121 Victory Drive, sorry. Get a little out of sorts. Conditional use, I'll open the floor to council members only for discussion and/or action.
Do we have any information on the radiation?
I can generally speak to that question, that cell towers themselves do not emit radiation. They emit this non-ionizing radiation, like, it is essentially a microwave. And there is currently a cell tower array on top of our water tower, approximately one-quarter of a mile from this location. This is replacing that cell tower array that's on top of our water tower. But I can't speak to the medical effects of that. I think Paul may need to correct me on this, but I don't think that we can speak to the radio frequency aspect of this. Is that something you've ever heard, Paul?
Well, there is the Telecommunications Act that of, I think it's the mid-'90s, it's federal, that gets into the issue of when government, local governments try to completely exclude cell towers, that the federal law preempts that. So, you can't specifically and carte blanche exclude them. Our ordinance allows them under certain guidelines and structures. Based upon Mr. Calendar's representation, the applicant has complied with all of those. As to the issue of getting into the science of the towers themselves, I mean, I think the issue is, is this an appropriate use under your zoning ordinance? That's the question that you have. You have a zoning ordinance that addresses specifically the allowance of telecommunications towers in certain areas, with this being M1 being one of them, our highest intense zoning allowed in our city. So, that's what I'd encourage you to focus on. I'm not qualified in the science or the medical field, and I don't think anybody sitting before you is, to address that issue. So, I would make your decision based upon your zoning ordinance, the recommendation of your staff, and the measures and the metrics that you can reasonably identify and articulate.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Can I get clarification on one thing?
Yes, sir.
Commander said, is this going to replace what's on the water tower now?
Mr. Calendar, that's your understanding?
So, that's my understanding of... And I may let the applicant answer that question. There's currently an AT&amp;T array on top of our water tower, if I'm not mistaken.
There's a T-Mobile on top right now.
Of our own, off of the other...
Norah Street.
Is it T-Mobile? I thought this was replacing. Then I'll let the applicant answer that question. They're probably trying to fill a gap for AT&amp;T then.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm under... In the understanding that the water tower is going to be a relocation. So, if the tower... If the water tower has T-Mobile at this time, we are building our infrastructure for AT&amp;T. Now, the site that's on the water tower with T-Mobile, they are welcome to hop onto our tower as a tenant as well. But it's not a relocation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry. No, ma'am.
Okay. I'm not a big fan of cell towers anywhere, but we got to have them. It meets the standards set forth in the zoning ordinance. My biggest concern about it was the height of it and the proximity to residences. I think the special conditions take care of that concern, because things happen, things fall. We sure don't want it to fall on somebody's house. I'll make a motion to approve the application, subject to the three conditions that were stated.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. I have a motion to approve with the three conditions. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion by Mr. Dickinson, a second by Mr. Bradley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? Motion carries with one in opposition. That passes. Moving to fiscal year 2022 audited financial statements. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I introduce Ryan Jones with Malden Jenkins, I had invited some of my finance staff to come tonight. And as I call their name, if they'll stand, I'm going to put them on the spot. Sonia Caterina Hayden Harrison, you can say standing if you want to, you don't have to. Kaitlin Talford, Paula Wilson, and Cherie Day. I don't think she is here. She was unable to come. Her daughter has been in the hospital for the last two weeks. So I asked these ladies to come tonight to kind of recognize them and all their hard work that they've done over the last year. People don't realize the responsibility these ladies have day in and day out for making sure all aspects of the money that comes into city and is paid out from the city and all the in-between, to make sure it's accurate and timely, to make sure vendors are paid and employees are paid on time. We've had a challenging last year. We had a staff member leave that had been here for a while. We had two ladies on maternity leave at different times, so they have newborn babies they're taking care of. And we've also had other obstacles. One employee, Cherie, who's only been here a year, so we've had to train her. They're all very dependable, and I couldn't do this job without them each day. I want to personally thank them for their dedication, not only to me and the finance department, but for the city of Monroe. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies.
Now, I'll ask Ryan Jones with Malden Jenkins to come up. He will give you an overview of our audited financials for the 2022 year and also the annual comprehensive financial report.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Ryan Jones. I work with Malden and Jenkins. I'm a director in our Atlanta office. And I was happy to be part of the audit team this year for the City of Monroe's audit for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2022. A little bit about our firm. I'm really proud of our firm. We serve about 650 government clients with about 135,000 staff hours dedicated annually just to government clients. So we do lots of cities, counties, school districts. We really enjoy what we do, and we love working with you guys. So I'm here to present the results of the 2022 audit, and you all should have received two documents. The first one, this big guy, this is the annual comprehensive financial report. So this is, these are your financial statements, statistical tables in the back. There's the management's discussion and analysis up front, basic statements, and then transmit a letter at the very front. This second, smaller document, this is our report on internal control and compliance, combined with a report on the results of our testing of federal expenditures. So they are presented separately, and I'll go over some of the highlights of those right now. First, when I mentioned annual comprehensive financial report, that's not a requirement. That's really for governments who want to go above and beyond just producing a basic set of financial statements and really put something together that is meaningful for citizens, for readers, for management, for decision-making. Each year, that gets submitted to the Government Financial Officers Association, the GFOA. And for the 2021 audit, the act for was submitted to GFOA, and you all did receive a certificate of achievement, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So congratulations. I fully expect that when we submit the 2022 report to GFOA, you'll also get a certificate for that. So a couple of highlights, really what you all have us do is we come in, we do an audit, and then at the end of the audit, we give you our auditor's report. And a couple of things I wanted to go over. First, the financial statements are the responsibility of management. So even though we come in and we do lots of tests, and our report is before the financial statements, the financial statements are the responsibility of management. What we do is we come in and we perform our audit. We design tests to get us to a point where we're comfortable expressing an opinion on those financial statements. And for 2022, I'm happy to say that our report is, our opinion on the report is unmodified. So that's really the highest level of assurance that we can give on a set of financial statements. So congratulations to the finance department. Couple of new things this year. In the auditor's report, which is at the front part of the act for, there's an emphasis of a matter, and that's just regarding the implementation of what's called GASB 87. It's Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Statement 87, starting this year, you're required to report long-term lease liabilities and lease receivables. So that changed some of the presentation and put some new numbers in your financial statements. So we did want to point that out to the readers. Couple of financial highlights. So overall, the city had a great year. At the end of the year, December 31st, there was about $240 million, $240 million of assets, offset by about $89, about $89 million of liabilities. So that results in essentially equity and equity balance of $150 million, and $27 million of that is unrestricted. So it means it's not tied up in your capital asset balances, and it's not tied to grant funding or any sort of other restrictions from revenue. So that $27 million is really resources that you all have available to you to, you know, to further your initiatives. So that was a government-wide perspective. In governments, you have funds that you report in. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the government. And at the, well, for the year ended December 31st, property taxes, of course, are your highest source of revenue. You had about $4.7 million worth of property taxes. General fund expenditures, actually, you all had about $9 million worth of public safety expenditures, so that was your highest category of expenditures. And after the presentation, I'll make sure you all get a copy of this, so you can see all the charts and graphs. The compliance report, which I mentioned earlier, the smaller statement here, this has what we call a yellow book report and a single audit report. So the single audit report, we actually do issue an opinion on compliance. So this year, we tested the ARPA money that the city expended during 2022. And I'm happy to say that you all had a unmodified opinion on compliance for that. So we did a whole bunch of testing of those transactions, and there was nothing wrong from what we saw. So that's great. You're expending those monies in compliance with the grant agreements. We didn't have any significant difficulties during the audit. A couple of disagreements, you know, that's pretty standard in audit, but nothing too significant that we would need to talk about here. Audit adjustments, I do have a list of audit adjustments that has been provided to Beth, so if you're all ever curious about the types of adjustments that get posted after we receive the initial numbers, you can look at those. And it is important to note that we are independent auditors, so we don't have any conflicts of interest when we come in here. We can take an objective look at the books. Couple of findings, there are a couple of audit findings at the back of the compliance report, and I just want to talk about those a little bit now. So the first thing I want to say is, like, there are really bad findings to have that you guys didn't have. So if there were problems with cash going out the door, or, you know, if we found a fake vendor, you know, who was getting paid, like, those are big deals. The two findings that we had, they're really more, really more clerical slash accounting errors for situations that don't occur very often. And unfortunately, under the auditing standards that we have to adhere to, if we identify a discrepancy and we have to propose a correction, we're required to communicate that to governance. So that's really the reason that there are a couple of findings in your financial statements. The first one is in regards to the identification of leases receivable, and finance had identified quite a few leases. When we performed our audit procedures to make sure that that listing was complete, we did identify a couple more that had not been identified. So we had to record adjustments and put disclosures in the financial statements for those. So that's one of the findings. And then the second one is regarding the forfeited drug fund. A material adjustment had to be posted, unfortunately, to correct a debit balance and accounts payable. So if y'all don't understand accounting, accounts payable should have a credit balance, so it had a negative balance. So it really stuck out as being something that was odd. So we had to post an adjustment to correct that. There's not a whole lot of activity in that forfeited drug fund. So again, this isn't an issue with day-to-day operations, you know, anything of that nature. They were, they're really just mistakes in circumstances that don't happen too often. And as we move into 2023, it is important to know that there's another new standard coming out, and this is for software technology arrangement. Very similar to leases. If you have a long-term obligation to a, to a software company for software services, what's going to happen in '23 is that's going to end up being an asset on your balance sheet and also a liability. So that's just something that's on the horizon. And I'm happy to stick around and answer any specific questions. I'm available. If you all are going through these reports and you have any questions, Beth has my contact information.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any questions?
I got a couple of questions for you. What you said that you need to address to us, the two things that you need to address to the council, for what reason?
So under auditing standards, if we encounter an issue where management did not correct a balance that was wrong in the numbers, and we have to, we have to bring that to management's attention, and an adjustment happens after that, since management didn't identify it and we did, we are obligated, under accounting standards, to communicate that to governance. And that's really what the purpose of the compliance report is. It's our report to governance about issues that we encountered during the audit.
So let me ask you the next question. Had adjustments been made yet, or no?
Yes, yes. That's a good point. All of the adjustments have been made. The financial statements are materially accurate, in our opinion, and all of those adjustments have been corrected. And in our discussions with finance, as we go into this new year with another new standard, I've encouraged, I've encouraged Beth to reach out to me with any questions as we go through that process, so that we don't come into '23 and have to, have to record adjustments during the audit. Because at that point, it's a different thing from a conversation prior to the audit.
When you said adjustments had to be made, are there a particular number that we're looking for as far as what you seen and what you didn't see?
Sure. So if we go to the back of this compliance report here, it does get into a little more detail on the findings. So the first, the lease finding, that resulted in adjustments of about close to $400,000.
What group had to adjust it? Was that a financial for us? What department was that in? That's what I'm asking.
That was on a hanger lease. So what happened is, there's a new GASB standard, number 87, that's based on leases. It's a new standard that was implemented this year. We did bring to the auditor's attention that we have leases for vehicles. The water tower space, actually, it was actually talked about earlier, and also the rental of the community building. That's an actual lease, too. What we did not bring to their attention, because I was not aware of, was some land leases at the airport, which are hanger land leases. I was aware of them, and I want to correct some, or kind of add to something that you said. We were recording the receipt of those lease payments. We were not recording them according to the GASB rule that has to be recorded, the way they want us to record them. So the money was coming in, the money was being recorded, and Ryan, please elaborate on this and correct me if I'm wrong, but they were not being recorded the way that the GASB standard says it has to be recorded. So that was one finding. The other one, under the forfeited drug fund, we were recording any money that comes in in a liability account, and then we would pay it out of that liability account. It's a $33,000 entry that they had us correct to make it, the expense, go to the expense account instead of that liability account, which is the way we have been doing it for the last 10 years. So I want to point that out.
The leasing standard is just more of a disclosure.
It is.
The income and expense won't change.
So it changed a little bit. So historically, prior to 2022, if you had a lease and you were renting anything out to anybody, or you're renting something from somebody, the lease of something to a third party, when you got payments, you would just record that as revenue, deposit the cash, record as revenue. And same with the liabilities. If you had to, you know, rent an office space, you would, you would just pay that. It would be an expenditure on your financial statement. So GASB, many years ago, decided that there was a problem with that, and I'm not entirely sure why. It seemed okay to me, you know, before we got into 2022. So really, what we have now is, instead of just recognizing that revenue as it comes in, there's an asset on the balance sheet, and it's a lease receivable. And so it's really just the present value of all the future payments that you're anticipating to receive under that contract.
Are there any other questions for Ryan?
I will point out that the disagreement that we had was based on these two findings. We had to agree to disagree.
You know, I don't like, I don't like recording findings. Unfortunately, though, as I mentioned, you know, auditing standards, it's getting harder and harder for us to kind of look the other way and, you know, have an offline conversation about it. And I fully don't expect these findings to be, you know, repeated moving forward.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Beth. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Little. Finance and accounting. I appreciate it, fellas. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Thank you, Beth. Vines Monroe, we're coming back to that, right? Okay. That being said, let's discuss the name change of South Jackson to Daniel Ramey Lane. Oh, Brad, I'm sorry.
Take it away, Brad.
Yeah, take it away, Brad.
The appointments to the Impact Fee Committee, Development Impact Fee Committee, if you recall, back in April, Marilyn Hall from Hall Consulting made a presentation to this council. And part of that presentation included some information that requires, before this council adopts any impact fees, that we could form a committee and have at least one meeting. This is the proposal of the nominees for that committee. I'm happy to read those if Mr. Mayor would like.
I'll handle that in just one second.
But thank you. This was prepared and researched by the Human Resources Office and myself, and these were the candidates that were selected for that committee, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callender. There are five names. We had six. We're down to five. Carol Queen, Clarissa Picano, Chad Draper, Nathan Farmer, and Jennifer Mata. Are there any questions for Brad or anything to discuss?
Just have these people been asked to serve, and are they interested?
Yes, ma'am. They have been asked to serve. They've been notified of the potential meeting, and we've been in contact with them. And they've all shown their interest and accepted the nomination if council so chooses to nominate those individuals.
And I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve those five.
I have a motion to approve the five by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Now, changing. Now, changing the name of South Jackson Street to Daniel Ramey Lane. I will tell you, I talked to Tony about it a month or so ago. He wrote a letter requesting it, told him to come in and, and just mention it to council during public comment. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea.
I agree. I think, you know, as long as we can do it legally and it sounds like with little impact by way of having others have to change their addresses and whatever.
All right, then I move that we do it.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Crawford. Any discussion?
Does the post office have to do anything?
There are several steps that we have to take to put it into official format. Notify the post office, notify the county.
We just notify, we don't have to get approval?
Right.
Okay, that's good. I, I like that.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Y'all, I appreciate your cooperation on that. That's great. So once we jump through all the hoops, the...
All required.
Staff can take care of it. It's, it's y'all's road, you own it, you name it how you want to.
Yeah. That does not mean that we need to change North Jackson to just Jackson. We can leave it as is? Okay. District items, Ms. Malcolm.
I would just like to say that I think our city crews do an amazing job handling as much as they can with our litter. But I would like to ask if the city, or Logan, or Chris could contact the county and find out if the roadway crews that Chris Couch was orchestrating, if they're gonna continue to do this, because some of our outlying streets, like Ammons Bridge and parts of McDaniel, and all of those streets that are ne-, around our fast food restaurants are just being littered like no other. And I don't think the county crews are out anymore. And I, I'd like to see us as a council write a letter and, you know, request if you think that's appropriate, just throw it out for discussion.
To the sheriff? I think that's appropriate.
Can do.
Thank you, Lee. I think you got a lot of nods. Marsha?
No.
Larry? Norman?
Not in my dish, but a question about Matthew Park. Are we gonna put in the power and water out there?
I don't know that that's on the schedule. Mr. Bailey?
Easiest way to answer that would be, right now, we are trying to keep everything from sunup to sundown with a small park staff. It's kind of hard to maintain water usage, I guess, during the day. If someone has an event planned for on the weekend, they can reach out to the city, and we can try to work with them, we have in the past, when it come to water sometimes. But then we've got to get power to that back pavilion. I mean, we have it to the restroom, we have water to the restroom to be able to connect that power to the back one. So in time, that is the goal. So just kind of work into that.
Okay. Well, what, what kind of timeframe you got within time?
I think what we've discussed as staff is trying to come up with a facilities rental program so that we can more officially rent the spaces. And when we do that, power and water and the security of those under lock boxes would be a part of that. So, you know, we can deliver the key to whomever is renting it, and there's some accountability there and deposits and whatever. So we'll take that into consideration and do that as soon as possible, for sure.
Definitely would like to see that happen sooner than later.
You good, Norman? Mr. Gregory?
Again, congratulations to the county department, Beth, on another great audit and getting everything knocked out there. I want to say thanks to Danny again. He helped one of my neighbors out recently, and appreciate all that you guys are doing throughout the city constantly every day, but appreciate that going above and beyond again. And I just appreciate what everybody's working towards here.
Mr. Little?
I don't have anything.
Come on, Nathan.
Mr. Dickinson?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to explain to you that the old English name, it's S-E-A-M-U-S, is pronounced Shamas at the University of Georgia. They may pronounce it differently at the University of Florida, but... And on that note...
You know, he was the one I specifically asked, who told me to pronounce it that way. The rest of them just kind of nodded. So I'll let you take it up with the folks from Liverpool.
I just couldn't resist.
Okay, mayoral updates. I see Mr. McClung out in the audience, right? 21 years with the force. Don't know if you knew that. LinkedIn told me. So congratulations. We appreciate your service, as with the other men and women on the force, and we appreciate the, all the work that you do. I was just notified today that we were named as a tree city again. Of course, on their notice, it was from 2022. I think they might have forgotten to change that date, but that's the, probably the 16th year, I think, in a row that we've been named an official tree city. I wanted to thank Sarah and, and everybody involved doing Community Impact Day. Wanted to remind folks, this group we head from Liverpool tonight, they're part of the UGA Global Studies Program. They've come here a couple, they've come a couple of times a year. The next group is coming out of Africa on July 4th, so they want to come watch the fireworks. Two more things. One, we've been given the official notice to proceed with the trucker out. So it's only taken 35 years since the first time I saw an article about it. But GDOT has really, really spent some time and effort and energy at building efficiency and safety in, in the city, and I appreciate it. Finally, Northeast Georgia Regional Council put out this little document update, and there's a picture for the local administrator of the year for Northeast Georgia Regional Commission, Logan Probst, City Monroe Administrator. Bert Walker presented the award. In his remarks, he noted, "Mr. Probst has served as Monroe's city administrator for the last five years, previously held finance director positions for a county and a city, earned a BS in poly sci and master's degree in public administration from North Georgia College. During the past five years, Probst helped the city's downtown grow and redevelop, which attracted over 200,000 visitors last year. The city also realized a 20% increase in sales tax revenue and an increase in the city's reserves by 300% under his guidance." Congratulations. We do have, we do have need for an executive session, so I will take a motion to adjourn to executive session, please. A motion by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Let me give that one to Tyler Gregory. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Meeting adjourned to executive session.